We call this meeting the Common Council to order. Roll call, please.
Kraus.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Byer.
Here.
Peachey.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandl.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we will entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come up to the podium and address the council and give your name and address for the record. And if it would be so kind as to speak into the microphone, we don't have our holder here tonight. Anyone? There being no one, we adjourn to a public hearing on the proposed amendment to Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code of the City of Jefferson related to the rezoning of 1420 South Rockwell Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business. I'll call this public hearing to order, and I'll ask the city administrator to please read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of Public Hearing, City of Jefferson, Proposed Amendment to Zoning Map. Notice is hereby given that the Common Council of the City of Jefferson will hold a public hearing in the council chambers of the Jefferson City Hall, 317 South Main Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin, on 2 February 2016 at 7:00 PM to hear the following rezoning requests for a 6.43 acre parcel of property and a 1.57 acre parcel of property located at 1420 South Rockwell Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business. This hearing notice was published in the January 19 and January 26 editions of the Jefferson Daily Union. All interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing. I might add that this piece of property is a piece of property that is owned by the City of Jefferson. The city is the petitioner for the zoning change. Commonly, we refer to the property as the VFW property, which the city acquired last summer. This matter has been considered by the Plan Commission at their most recent meeting last week. They are recommending the rezone of the property, finding that it is consistent with the City of Jefferson comprehensive land use map. And the finding essentially was that the highest and best use for this property, at least the frontage on the Rockwell, to be a business, highway, commercial, and certainly not residential, which is the historic zoning use of the property. I might also add that, at the same meeting, the Plan Commission considered and conditionally approved, conditionally approved, meaning that it's conditioned on the rezone of the property, but they did approve a conditional use permit for the recreational uses that occur in the facility, most notably the programming by the City of Jefferson Recreation Department, and also the ball field use that is out in front of the building adjacent to the Rockwell frontage. And that was approved unanimously by the commissioners.
Thank you, Tim. Next, we'll have an explanation of the zoning change by city engineer Bill Pennell.
I don't believe I have anything to add to Administrator Fryteg's description, other than to say that, as Tim had mentioned, that the zoning designation is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain public input. Any person wishing to be heard, please do so from the podium, and please state your name, address, and reason for appearing. There being no one, we will close the public hearing and move on to Proposed Ordinance Number 1-16, an ordinance to amend Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code related to the rezoning of a 6.43 acre parcel at 1420 South Rockwell Avenue. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, Ordinance Number 1-16. The Common Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordains as follows. Section 1, Section 300-19B of the zoning map, City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which is herein made apart, is amended to change district boundaries of a 6.43 acre parcel from R1 Single Family Residential District to the zoning designation of BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business District. Parcel number is 241-0614-1412-000. Address is 1420 South Rockwell Avenue. Proposed permanent zoning designation is BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business District. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force after passage and publication as provided by law, and notification and attestation of the district boundary changes incorporated herein the zoning map, City of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl, in discussion. Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor of approval of the zoning change, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, Proposed Ordinance Number 2-16, an ordinance to amend Section 300-19B of the Municipal Code related to the rezoning of a 1.5 acre parcel at 1420 South Rockwell Avenue. Once again, Alderman Miller, please.
Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, Ordinance Number 2-16. The Common Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordains as follows. Section 1, Section 300-19B of the zoning map, City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, which herein is made apart, is amended to change district boundaries of a 1.57 acre parcel from R1 Single Family Residential District to the zoning designation of BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business District. Parcel number is 241-0614-1412-001. Address is 1420 South Rockwell Avenue. Proposed permanent zoning designation, BHN Highway and Neighborhood Business District. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force after passage and publication as provided by law, and notification and attestation of the district boundary changes incorporated herein the zoning map, City of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Byer, in discussion. Any questions or comments about this? This is the smaller of the two parcels at that location. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as the clerk calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 90, the Consent Agenda. Alderman Byer, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens, City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 90. Be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for tonight, February 2, 2016, is hereby adopted. The consent agenda for tonight includes vouchers payable for December 2015 and February 2016 in the amount of $20,787 and $169,031, respectfully, and the payroll summary for January 22, 2016, in the amounts of $144,003. Council minutes from the January 19, 2016, meetings of the Common Council, licenses as approved by the Regulatory Committee. We had two operators licensed, one for Rebecca Johnson for Speedway and one for Megan Leach Ledwich for Heron's Landing. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Roth. Any discussion, additions or corrections? There being none, all in favor of approval as presented, please signify by saying aye as the clerk calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 91, a resolution authorizing the redemption of 2008 State Trust Fund loan debt. Alderman Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution 92. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Jefferson, in the County of Jefferson, Wisconsin, borrow from the trust funds of the State of Wisconsin, the sum of $165,000, for the purpose of financing the purchase of a fire truck and for no other purpose. The loan is to be payable within five years from the 15th day of March preceding the date the loan is made. The loan will be repaid in annual installments with interest at the rate of 3% per annum from the date of making the loan to the 15th day of March next and thereafter annually as provided by law. Resolve further that there shall be raised and there is levied upon all taxable property within the City of Jefferson, the County of Jefferson, Wisconsin, a direct annual tax for the purpose of paying interest and principal on the loan as they become due. Resolve further that no money obtained by the City of Jefferson by such loan from the State would be applied or paid out for any purpose except financing the purchase of fire truck without consent of the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. Resolve further that in case the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands of Wisconsin agrees to make the loan, that the mayor and clerk of the City of Jefferson, in the County of Jefferson, Wisconsin, are authorized and empowered, in the name of the city, to execute and deliver to the commission certificates of indebtedness in such form as required by the commission for any sum of money that may be loaned to the city pursuant to this resolution. Mayor and clerk of the city will perform all necessary actions to fully carry out the provisions of Chapter 24, Wisconsin statutes, and these resolutions. Resolve further that this preamble and these resolutions, and the aye and no vote by which they were adopted, be recorded, and that the clerk of this city forward this certified record, along with the application of the loan, to the Board of Commissioners of the Public Lands of Wisconsin. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl, and, Tim, if you could, please give us a brief summary of this.
I surely can. The principal amount of the loan, $165,000, represents the city's portion of a urban, rural fire truck. The actual equipment costs about $550,000. The remaining balance is split among four townships that receive fire suppression service from the city. They have paid their portion of the cost of that fire apparatus. The fire truck actually has been ordered and paid for with the city advancing funds from its general fund, so these loan proceeds will be used to basically reimburse that general fund, once so derived. Extremely attractive, 3% interest. We're amortizing this over a pretty short period of time, but five years, and I would guess that it would add about slightly less than 1% on the annual City of Jefferson property tax levy.
Thank you, Tim. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor Offerman, paragraph number three, there shall be raised and there is a levied upon taxable property. Is that just stating that it's already been levied for, or we're not raising any additional levies, correct?
What that really means, Tim, is this is general obligation debt. And basically, when that's issued, you're pledging the full faith and credit of your community. And what it really means is, if you don't have another means to make your debt service payment, you're going to levy on the tax rolls a property tax to collect and pay that debt. And that's why you get the real attractive interest rate.
Okay.
So we have not levied anything yet. So this would be in future years if we would need to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 92, a resolution to authorize loan for the purchase of a fire truck. Alderman Kraus, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution 92. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Jefferson, in the County of Jefferson, Wisconsin, borrow from the trust funds of the State of Wisconsin, the sum of $165,000, for the purpose of financing the purchase of a fire truck and for no other purpose. The loan is to be payable within five years from the 15th day of March preceding the date the loan is made. The loan will be repaid in annual installments with interest at the rate of 3% per annum from the date of making the loan to the 15th day of March next and thereafter annually as provided by law. Resolve further that there shall be raised and there is levied upon all taxable property within the City of Jefferson, the County of Jefferson, Wisconsin, a direct annual tax for the purpose of paying interest and principal on the loan as they become due. Resolve further that no money obtained by the City of Jefferson by such loan from the State would be applied or paid out for any purpose except financing the purchase of fire truck without consent of the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands. Resolve further that in case the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands of Wisconsin agrees to make the loan, that the mayor and clerk of the City of Jefferson, in the County of Jefferson, Wisconsin, are authorized and empowered, in the name of the city, to execute and deliver to the commission certificates of indebtedness in such form as required by the commission for any sum of money that may be loaned to the city pursuant to this resolution. Mayor and clerk of the city will perform all necessary actions to fully carry out the provisions of Chapter 24, Wisconsin statutes, and these resolutions. Resolve further that this preamble and these resolutions, and the aye and no vote by which they were adopted, be recorded, and that the clerk of this city forward this certified record, along with the application of the loan, to the Board of Commissioners of the Public Lands of Wisconsin. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Brandl, and, Tim, if you could, please give us a brief summary of this.
I surely can. The principal amount of the loan, $165,000, represents the city's portion of a urban, rural fire truck. The actual equipment costs about $550,000. The remaining balance is split among four townships that receive fire suppression service from the city. They have paid their portion of the cost of that fire apparatus. The fire truck actually has been ordered and paid for with the city advancing funds from its general fund, so these loan proceeds will be used to basically reimburse that general fund, once so derived. Extremely attractive, 3% interest. We're amortizing this over a pretty short period of time, but five years, and I would guess that it would add about slightly less than 1% on the annual City of Jefferson property tax levy.
Thank you, Tim. Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor Offerman, paragraph number three, there shall be raised and there is a levied upon taxable property. Is that just stating that it's already been levied for, or we're not raising any additional levies, correct?
What that really means, Tim, is this is general obligation debt. And basically, when that's issued, you're pledging the full faith and credit of your community. And what it really means is, if you don't have another means to make your debt service payment, you're going to levy on the tax rolls a property tax to collect and pay that debt. And that's why you get the real attractive interest rate.
Okay.
So we have not levied anything yet. So this would be in future years if we would need to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? There being none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution Number 93, a resolution to approve a bid for 2016 street and utility improvements on East Washington Street, South Sandborne Avenue, and East Dodge Street. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 93. Whereas the City of Jefferson received 10 bids from contractors interested in completing the rebid of 2016 street and utility improvements for East Washington Street, South Sandborne Avenue, and Dodge Street project, and whereas the values of the three lowest bidders are included in the following table. James Peterson Sons Incorporated, base bid was $920,528, with the alternate of $59,965. Cruzeck Construction, with a base bid of $922,526, and an alternate of $59,288. Forest Landscaping, with a base bid of $960,683, and the alternate of $58,013. Whereas the prebid engineering estimate for the base bid and corresponding alternates was $965,621. Whereas monies for this project have been allocated in the capital improvement fund, sanitary storm fund, storm sewer fund, CDBG grant funding, and by Jefferson Utilities. Whereas Town and Country Engineering and city staff reviewed the project bid results and recommends award of project to James Peterson Sons Incorporated, which is the low qualified bidder. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Jefferson upon the review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Horn, in discussion. Bill, would you give us a summary of this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. This project is a continuation of the 2015 Center Street project. This portion extends east along East Washington and north Sandborne up to East Milwaukee Street, and a small portion of East Dodge Street. The Center Street project, a big portion of that was a new 48-inch storm sewer. The real reason that this project is happening, in addition to the pavement, is to extend the storm sewer up to East Milwaukee Street to address an undersized storm sewer system in the area that has caused significant flooding of Sandborne and Dodge Street for several years. So we're anticipating that this 48-inch storm sewer is going to increase the capacity and address that issue. In addition to that storm sewer, we're also addressing pavement issues, curving, and we're also including improvements to the sanitary sewer and water main. This project, we had 10 bids, which was definitely an improvement over last year. James Peterson Sons comes highly recommended, and as the lowest qualified bidder, we'd make a recommendation to award the bid. This will be a 2,000, probably a spring construction, and we'll be working with residents, as well as the school district and church that will be affected by the project.
Okay. Bill, just a quick question. Do you anticipate that this is going to be able to be completed prior to the beginning of the school year?
We are currently working with the contractor on the schedule on this. We've also contacted the school district. I anticipate that, because of the fact that we've got some requirement with the CDBG funds, that we will be starting the project probably in the spring. We'll be working out with the contractor. However, we are closely working with the school district to make sure that we are either completed by the end of the school year, or if we extend it, that we are not going to impact them until school is completed.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Bill? This has been phase two of a fairly large project that's been a long time coming and a long time in the plans. So if there are no other questions or comments... We have a motion. Okay. Sorry. Just retracting here. If there are no other questions or comments, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Rita calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Peachey.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Brandl.
Aye.
Lars.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Kraus.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
in its efforts to promote the desired development, resulting in taxing amount of district number two, and through an increment, share with tid number five as a donor district, and whereas the city has received aggregate tax increments in amount equal to the aggregate of all projects costs under the project plan, and whereas it is in the best interest of the city to dissolve tid number two, now therefore be it resolved that tiff number two is hereby dissolved, and that the city clerk has notified the Department of Revenue that tid number two has been dissolved, and be it further resolved that the county, that the common council hereby accepts the audited tax increment district number two closeout document, is drafted by Baker Tilly, and directs the finance director to distribute excess proceeds from the district to the overlying taxing jurisdictions. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lars, and discussion. Mr. Frytag?
Um, I can handle it very, very quickly. Um, statutorily, this is the last step in, uh, the process, uh, dissolving, uh, a tax increment district. We took that action last fall. Um, but statutorily, the last step is to do an audit of all the district's expenditures and revenues. That's before you, um, where you sit, and the key finding was that, uh, there's approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars in surplus increment remaining. That gets a portion back amongst, uh, all the overlapping taxing jurisdictions, and how that eighty-eight thousand dollars will be apportioned is actually on page nine, and I can just read it very quickly. Uh, Jefferson County, uh, their, uh, share is, uh, not quite fifteen thousand dollars. The City of Jefferson, not quite thirty thousand dollars. Uh, Jefferson School District, a little over thirty-seven thousand dollars, and the Madison Area Technical College, a little over six thousand dollars. Um, our goal would be, if, if this is adopt, the resolution is adopted tonight, uh, to provide each of the taxing jurisdictions with a copy of this audit report, as well as a check, uh, representing their share of the remaining surplus tax increment this month in February.
Does anyone have any questions of Tim? Uh, Tim, if you could just give us the, in, in round numbers, what was the, uh, the increment that was returned after the district was closed out? It was twelve?
Uh, back on the tax rolls, uh, about eleven million.
Eleven, eleven million dollars that was created. Um, that would not have occurred for not for this, if not for this, uh, district, so it was, uh, by all accounts, a very successful district and, and, uh, forward-thinking from those that were on the council back in nineteen ninety-seven. So, if there are no other questions?
How many is that? I'd find, uh...
If there are no other questions, and the call of the roll, uh, all in favor, please signify by saying aye as your name is called, know if you're opposed.
Ruth.
Aye.